Today is Wednesday, November the sixth, two thousand and nineteen, and we're a little delayed. The time is about six oh seven P M. Regular meeting of the city council, the city of Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for the committee's? What do we just?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a united island, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Benado.
Here.
Goodall.
Here.
Gringo.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
McTague.
Here.
Miles.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Approval of the agenda, do any, does council have any changes?
I would like, hold on a second. I would like to, it's in the consent agenda. We've had a team of law enforcement. And there's been some substance and assets provided for real. Discussion, deep discussion, Mr. Valentine. But I think that we probably should remove that and talk about it.
Is the mic on this computer? It just needs. Throw it.
Which item, I'm sorry.
It's the one five B.
Five B, actually.
The resolution.
So we will move that to, please, right after the consent agenda, we'll pick that.
Eight D.
Let's make that on eight, eight D then.
Eight D.
And then move it, move it to eight D. Thank you. They could have motion, please.
I move that we are intended to have five B moved to a different location.
Okay.
And then I.
Second.
Proponent.
Yeah, second. Call vote.
Benado.
Yeah.
Goodall.
Yes.
Gringo. Yes. Lopez.
Yes.
McTague.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, what I'll do is I'm gonna get the report from Les, because he has to leave early for a particular situation. So we'll get, we'll do your reports if you have one, and then we even leave at your leisure.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, council members, I, I appreciate that, Mayor. The, the main thing I wanted to report on is, um, the fact that the Trinidad holdings hearing, the rather contested proceeding that we had on October first, they, they had twenty-eight days within which to file a proceeding in district court if they were going to appeal this for judicial review of your decision. And, um, it's rule one oh six of the rules of civil procedure. And since they have not filed any proceeding within twenty-eight days, their timeline. So the decision stands. And I was confident it would, it's really easy for me to say now that the time period is run. But anyway, so they, they are essentially, uh, without remedy. I mean, there was nothing they can do to, to contest this. So, and, and Mayor, that's all I have. But since this is kind of in lieu of what would be my attorney report, I want to say congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the council people elect. Congratulations to the city and well advocated councilman Goodall. Well advocated.
I had a very strong crew of councilwoman.
Nice.
Miles, Ms. Pat Fletcher, Si Michaels, and, oh, uh, Hina Saied. So yeah, it was, I know, it was, you notice it's, it's easy to figure out why I had to do so much of the work now. Don't you hit me out, you understand, huh?
These good questions are not helping. That's all I have.
You had to bring the.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's move on to, uh, then item three, three A, which is the third quarter twenty nineteen financial reports. Cheryl.
No, both are not.
Yeah.
No, they are not.
They were. I know, they're not now or something. Good?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go off. Which?
There.
No, you may proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight we're gonna be going over the third quarter financials through September thirtieth. Oh, could you even see them here in front of the audience? Okay. So I'm not sure that you can see that well, are you looking at the drives? I can try to make the screen bigger.
Nah, I've got it on my drive.
Okay. Alrighty, so we'll go over general fund revenue first. We are overcollected on our third quarter sales tax by five hundred and eighty-six thousand. We are also overcollected on marijuana sales tax by one point, one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. But you recall, or you know, that thirty percent is gonna be going into reserves, which is eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So we're overcollected by four hundred and thirty thousand if you subtract the reserves. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, our retail sales were thirty-eight point eight million as compared to this quarter, forty-four point three million in marijuana. And the tax in two thousand and eighteen was two point five million versus our collective tax of one point two million now. Is that right?
No.
That's wrong.
That is wrong.
Oh, it was overall, two point five, my fault. Two point five million overall last year. Alright. Okay, we'll have to come back to that. Um, anyway, that was, so in two thousand and nineteen, twenty-five shops were open through September, and in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen shops were open. Uh, we are undercollected on our intergovernmental, excuse me, on other taxes, which includes, includes franchise tax. And those taxes usually come in end of October, um, in, or in early November, and those amount to approximately thirty-two thousand, so that should catch us up. Uh, regarding intergovernmental revenue, we are undercollected. We have not received a payment from the housing authority. There are payment in lieu of taxes, and we're still waiting to collect on a few grants.
And that amount will not be there somehow to the right behalf of that.
Right, that's correct.
Mayor, uh, you know, we interject that we've been in discussions with the housing authority, and based on their, uh, discussions with time, we may not have that agreement. It may be, they'll just pay the full amount. Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Who talked about that?
Yes.
We are undercollected on charges for services by twenty-four thousand dollars, but that includes dispatch, or the county's portion, portion of dispatch that was billed at the end of October. I believe that was around twenty-four thousand dollars. And we're also waiting on ten thousand dollars from the Trinidad School District. So that will also catch us up. It's just the timing that matters. At this time, we are, are overcollected in revenues by two million dollars. We are seventeen point four percent above budget. And then of that two million, we would subtract the eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. That would be going into reserves. Are there any questions on revenues?
Well, there was one on the positives, though.
Yeah, right.
If we move on to expenditures. Alrighty, so at, at the end of September, we are under budget by eleven point two percent, or one point five million. If you look at marijuana allocations, we are extremely underspent. Actually, council has approved, uh, one point four million, well, after tonight, it'll be one point four million of approved marijuana expenses. And eight hundred and twenty-four thousand of that is either spent or encumbered. So, uh, departments are waiting on the additional approval that will come, that should come from the council tonight. So that will catch us up to the one point two.
I have a question.
Yes.
Under expenditures, and I think that's where, my question was for you a moment ago, under general government for miscellaneous. It shows that we're a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and sixteen, and that variance is unfavorable. You just explained to me why that number is.
Which, which was that?
Under the general government, under miscellaneous.
Oh, miscellaneous?
Yes, now that, that, I was on the wrong page when I asked you that a moment ago.
So I believe that has to do with our property casualty liability insurance. We're over on that, we've had some claims. And then, let's see, what's the other one? Oh, I, I've talked about this before, we're over, um, so property liability, we're over by fifty thousand dollars at this time. And then we're also over in office supplies. Or I did budget that correctly. So we're over expended, so that's about twenty-five thousand dollars. And then there's just a bunch of other little ones that are adding up. But I, I don't know that, that will taper out because of the property casualty insurance. That one, if we have the claims and we pay over, then it's just gonna be over for the year.
Okay.
Okay. Um, city manager is over expended by somewhat. Uh, we did out of the safety training, or safety coordinator, and he's been taking a lot of trainings. So we're using a lot of money for that. And then fire department is also over expended. We did offer the compensated absences buyout at the end of September, and, um, an employee took, took the bait. So we paid out a little bit, um, for fire.
The grim re-sopper, you mean?
Um, and the same holds true for public works. We have the buyout, about forty-four thousand dollars. And then they're also over in overtime. And they're over, and, and their expenditures for asphalt and gravel. I believe we did increase asphalt and gravel expenditure for this year, so. But that one's just kinda hard to, to gauge every year. Okay, um. Uh, parks and rec is also over, and that would be due to wages. Their wages are heavy in the summer because they're paying their lifeguards. Um, that will, should balance out towards the end of the year.
Paying the what, did you say?
Excuse me?
Would you say paying the what?
Lifeguards. So their wages are heavy in the summer. It'll balance out now, but they're not working.
Do the seasonal, uh, people that take care of the flowers downtown, is that under parks and rec?
It's under public works. Yes. Yeah, actually, I'm curious on the miscellaneous, so I'm gonna take a peek at that tomorrow, and I'll follow up. Because I didn't highlight my progress. Are there any other expend, or questions for general fund expenditures? Um, so that brings us to, uh, eleven point two percent under expended, or one point four million dollars. If we move on to power and light. So power and light charges for services, they did catch up. Um, that's one of those funds that is seasonal. In June, it was nine percent under collect, or point nine percent under collected, or seventy-two thousand dollars short. Well, now it caught up with itself. We actually are overcollected by one point three percent, or a hundred and one thousand dollars. Our operating expenditures are two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, um, under expended, and we're, or two point seven percent under. And then you'll see capital outlay, it's starting to increase every quarter. Seven hundred and one thousand dollars of that seven hundred and fifty expended is attributed to the meter project, and then fifty thousand dollars is for the down payment on the bucket truck. Any questions for power and lights? And we'll move on to water.
Uh, debt service has a negative amount of seventeen thousand.
Power and lights. Oh, uh. So debt service, it's, it's a, a timing issue that will balance out towards the end of the year, but we calculated a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in our debt service. That was what was budgeted. And we've spent a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That was our first payment on the meter project, and there won't be any more debt service to do the rest of the year. So actually, we'll be under expended by the year end. Regarding the water fund, we are twenty-three hundred dollars short of what we should be. But this is again, one of those, uh, seasonal related funds. At the end of June, we were a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars short, so it did catch up with itself. Overall, we have, in the water fund, in revenue, we are one percent over collected, or twenty-five thousand dollars. Marijuana cultivation fees, we've collected two hundred and thirty-five thousand of the two hundred and fifty budgeted. Last year at September, two thousand and eighteen, we collected a hundred and one thousand. So we're about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars ahead of gain from, compared to last September.
Are they done filing with that? Have they, will we still see that money come in as they ship it out of their facilities, correct?
Correct, yes. We had some big payments the past, actually, in September, and I think there's a couple which are gonna post in October.
Yeah, I know we had a major increase in the amount planned this year, especially by Green Solutions, so I expected them numbers to go way up this year.
Okay, our expenditures in water are a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars under expended, or five point eight percent. And if you take a look at capital outlay, again, we have, uh, one point five million dollars spent. A portion of that is attributed to, attributed to water sewer infrastructure project and the meter project. And then again, we have the debt service of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That again is the payment on the meter service, or the meter project. Okay, are, there are no questions, we'll go to gas fund.
So that thirty, that three million dollars is due to the, the meters? I don't know what that is. Three, three million, six hundred. That was six oh seven. That was your data actual on the total expenditures?
For water?
Yeah.
Uh, total expenditures, oh, three million, six hundred and seven, yeah, that's total. That includes capital outlay and debt service. Right.
That was probably a lot for the meter project?
Oh, yes. Yes, one, uh, so, okay, one point five million is spent for capital outlay, and that includes the infrastructure project and the meter. For our gas fund, we are overcollected by a hundred and fifty-two thousand. At this time, or in June, we were overcollected by six hundred and four thousand. So again, that's related to the cold weather in January, February. We were, we received a lot of revenue at that time, and now it's tapering out. We, overall, our expenditures are, um, oh, I mean, excuse me, our revenues are overcollected by a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, or we're five point, five point three percent over budget. We did, there is an addition to this, uh, spreadsheet from the last quarter, the infrastructure improvement grant, because we did receive a grant from DOLA to help cover the meter project. So that, that's good news. Wasn't budgeted, because we didn't know about it until the beginning of the year. But yeah, we're, we're recognizing those, uh, grant monies right now. In expenditures, we are underspent by nine point five percent, or two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That'll direct you to capital outlay. The nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars are for cap, uh, capital outlay, is for the meter project. And, uh, debt service, again, seventy thousand dollars is the payment on the meter, the meter loan.
Cheryl?
Yes.
We're overcollected on the revenue side in the gas fund. We're very substantially under expended on the expenditure side. Is this because rates have gone down, and these are gonna be funneled back through utility bills next year?
No, we will start.
Will we do the year-to-year reset? You're not talking about, right?
Yes, so we've, we've tracked it, and, uh, we're at the rate we're at now, we feel real comfortable with the weather patterns and everything that our consultant looks at, that what, what we're charging now is, is going to break even.
It's gonna break even? Okay, so why are we so under expended?
So our, if you're looking at the expend, just the operating expenditures, we're under by two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Right.
Okay, and now it's starting to get cold, so our bills are gonna start increasing.
Oh, I see.
So through December, they're gonna.
Right, we're just gonna have to show them.
Exactly. I believe, last month's bill was forty-five thousand dollars, so. And then it's gonna jump significantly now. Okay. Are there any questions? So, sewer fund, we are, well, we're collected by seven percent, like twelve thousand dollars. And that one balanced itself out also. It was short last year, I think, by seventy-five thousand. Uh, we are under expended on expenditures by point two percent, or thirty-five million dollars. So the sewer fund is hanging on there. And then we have our capital outlay expenditures, and that was to do with the water sewer infrastructure project as well. And then the smaller funds are pretty status quo. Uh, we are a little bit over collected on lottery, but the final quarter payment will probably bring us in maybe about ten thousand dollars over collected for, to get us through the rest of the year. We are also over expended in lottery, but again, that's seasonal. They use a lot of money for paths, and trails, and parks, and facilities. So that one will balance itself out towards the end of the year.
Cheryl, can I ask you just a general?
Yes.
So when we overbudget on expenses and underbudget on revenue, so we have a surplus in these funds, what happens to those funds at the end of the year?
If we overcollect above the expenditures.
We're above.
It'll dump into fund balance. And you'll see if the, at the bottom, the revenue is over expenditures. Uh, for example, in the lottery fund was.
Well, we're short.
Sewer fund, we'll pick a second, it's over. So gas fund, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, that would go into fund balances. Okay.
Is it not accurate to say that the, the budget is fluid through the year? It's changing all the time.
Yes.
And for you to stand there and present these figures, just a snapshot, at that particular instance?
Yes.
And, and this is all gonna change?
Oh, absolutely.
Dating?
Exactly.
And, and it's a healthy representation of the direction we're taking and where we are, because we're able to project where we're going to be at the end, when the final number for the year. It's my, that's the way I understand, is that accurate?
Yes. Right. If you wanna take a peek at gas fund, um, the revenues through two thousand and eighteen were three point three, and our expenditures were two point six. So the difference, so, so that's been under a thousand, running to fund balance.
Which is not available for payment, we will taxes. Although we have guidelines on what was left.
Well, in the utilities, we try to push that forward to infrastructure improvements, we're at. And then in, in general fund, we move it into trying to cover our landfill, um, liability, compensated absences, the marijuana, that stuff gets moved in. So those types of funds that are restricted or committed, we move that fund balance in. And if there's anything left over, then if you recall, when we did our budget work session, five hundred thousand of our, in our reserves is gonna be pushed forward for fleet, to purchase fleet.
With, with approval of the landfill project, isn't that a question?
Yeah, that's gonna change.
Redirect and change a lot of things.
Absolutely.
So, hey, I don't know how we'll do it, but I can imagine some of these surpluses.
Oh, yeah, I doubt we'll. Landfill, as it's standing on its own, is gonna have a very difficult time making up that liability.
It's a trap, gotcha.
Yes. Tourism fund, uh, we are overcollected by ten percent. Um, third quarter is actually our busiest quarter, so we, we got to where we needed to be. And final quarter is a little bit less, but they'll probably come in a little bit over budget. I was gonna guesstimate about three hundred and ten thousand dollars, three-ten to three-twenty-five. And then our expenditures are over. Tourism, um, had awarded some funding for outside, like booze fest and those types of things. So those items have already hit. They've done a lot of advertising, but now their expenditures have kinda tapered down, so they'll be fine. They shouldn't go over budget. And if we suspect that, we'll do a budget amendment before the end of the year. Um, they're very conscious of their budget, though, and they pretty much, they know exactly where they stand. And finally, cap, oops. And as far as capital projects go, we're finally starting to see some movement. Get some expenditures going there, that's, that's a good thing. We have some grant dollars coming in as well. We should have a significant grant request from DOLA for the space to create project. We're just working on some final details. I'm gonna anticipate about seven hundred thousand dollars, but we'll see how that goes when that expenditure gets submitted. And then, um, we see some activity in the, in our arc, or the animal shelter construction. And, um, actually, you're gonna see a significant increase in the space to create, uh, expenditure, because the, the one, the two, one point two million dollar check that was written last week. And are there any questions regarding capital expenses?
I have a question there.
Yes.
So for the waterworks building we have, I know we budgeted for that, but because of the overrun of what we needed to pay for space to create, if you took the money from the other. So it still shows up as a budget, as a budget item, is that?
I didn't realize that was reappropriated that way, yeah.
Yes. So.
Yeah, it was for like a hundred thousand.
Yeah, we, we reappropriated that last year when we need, when we had a gap there, so we have.
Okay, well, that's a simple, simple budget amendment. Bottom line is, as long as we don't overexpend, the bottom line, we're okay. But I realized that, so I'll be moving, I can move that into that line item. Thank you for letting me know. And then, uh, we also will be talking about the animal shelter, uh, construction, because I think that one has to be, some money has to be reappropriated into that as well. But wait, are there any questions?
The only question I have, it looks like we're on track to hopefully that we don't have a large budget amendment at the end of the year like we did last year.
No, it'll be simple. If anything, we might just indicate that we're gonna increase revenues for marijuana sales tax over collection. But as far as the expenditures, which is really what you're approving, it's gonna be very minimal.
So that's one thing that I, I bothered me last year, that the budget amendment that we had to make last year was pretty large.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well done, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, onto item three B, uh, tourism board update. You know, Mike, I just wanted to say, you, I'm, I'm not sure, but I would say that, uh, some of the, some of the savings to what we're doing as far as, uh, our budget probably is coming from maybe our employees just watching what they're doing.
No.
Thank you for watching the dollars.
Did you hear Mark's page, or do we have to look through them?
They're right, they're all right on there.
So Thomas just, well, first of all, um, uh, hello, welcome. Thank you all, all of you for, for serving, and for, congratulations to everybody that made it through your term, and for those new people that are coming in, um, in, uh, city council. Um, and, uh, city council, and, yeah, and Mike, and Matt, and Audrey, and, uh, Georgie, and Molly, and everyone here.
Sorry, I'm a little too old for this.
Um, so to bring you up today, uh, a year ago, a year ago, so for being known, they're passing around some of the ads that we placed around the nation this year. Uh, a year ago, there was myself and Carol Blomchmaros, and Camilla, and Tom, and Craig Stevens. And currently, um, we have lost Carol and Craig, and on that board now is Nancy Lackey and Joey from Bricks. Our liaisons, uh, Mayor Phil became our liaison after Tara Marshall left, but we did have a short time with Karen Gray, who too, and we thank you for that time. We're gonna run by some of the stuff that we have done, it's kind of impossible, like you guys, to actually sit down and tell in a short, in a short phase about all the things that have gone on, but, um, you guys can say out here everything.
No, no, we go right.
So with KCRT, what we do is we hold a constant contract with KCRT on a promotional level for all events that are to be supported by the tourism board. No matter if they are fully funded with us or not, we still offer them those ads, because we keep an annual contract for them. We, uh, explain that, and KCRT's been really great about, um, cutting different commercials for all the events. SERT, we funded, um, an ad with SERT to advertise in their summer ride, so tourism would be out there. Studio Six was our former contract that did our website maintenance and Facebook and such. Um, we actually let them go slowly this year, we took on two local vendors, which saved us about fifty percent. So currently, we have a lady that works with TSJC and a few other programs in town, Kristy Rogers, and she maintains the website for the tourism website. I welcome everybody to go check that out, because that is updated weekly, and that is visit trinidadcolorado.com. Um, the Chronicle is now starting to do our Facebook pages and some other stuff, because they also work as an ad agency besides the newspaper. We did some stuff with Outdoor Ventures, um, with some ads and some stories, um, advertising Monument Lake, the golf course, hiking and biking in our area. We also funded the Midtown Museum a certain amount every month, and we required them to stay open six days a week to do that, and they agreed, so that's why the Midtown, it's one of the reasons they're open. Allison's been really great. Um, grant requirements, we came up with a new scoring system for any-
I got a curiosity that staying open that six days a week, does that help the progress?
Yeah, yes, yep, absolutely, yeah, it's been really great, and, and, and they are doing really well. Uh, we have come up with a new scoring sheet for the entities applying for grant, required everybody to follow it. The tourism website, which has been up for over a year now, um, is really, again, a great site, it's been, it's a lot to update it every week, they update it with events, they update it with businesses. And just to let you know before I take you out, in this, in this tourism board this year, there's been a lot of committees that have helped this go on, since we're also overseeing the Welcome Center. So we've had radio and television spots, Tom has spent a lot of time down at the Welcome Center with Marty getting stuff done, print media, grants, it's been, we, we've had lots of subcommittees for the tourism board this year. On the GoCo Colorado website, we send out hundreds of packs of tourists that like hard material, so I wanna tell you what hard is. When you get online and you see something you like, how many people take the time to actually click in, put your first name, your last name, your street address, everything that you want to the very bottom, because you want hard material versus soft material? So in the past, um, to give you an idea, in two thousand fifteen, we ran a little over seven hundred of those, and two thousand nineteen, just to date this year, there's been five thousand four hundred and fifteen people that have wanted hard stuff about Trinidad. They don't wanna go online, they want us to send it with us. A lot of whom have also asked us about economic development possibilities, so I have talked with Wally a little bit, saying we need to get a piece together for the city of Trinidad and the economic development. So those people that indicate they not only wanna find out how to move here, you know, all the living expenses, is give them something if they wanna bring a business here. On K R D O, on their website, social media, and print, uh, if you see the news thirteen weather channel now, they always mention Trinidad, and it's so funny, and they always have Trinidad on their map, but that's because we pay them to do that. So when you see that, you're like, hey, yeah, their, their name is Trinidad now, well, there's a little money behind that. Uh, so the K O S V G, which is the Colorado State Vacation Guide, which is the number-one marketing material the state uses, it comes out only once a year, that is, is expensive, for a page, it's fifteen thousand dollars. The few years that I know that we haven't done it, people in the local community complain, because you don't see Trinidad in the Colorado State Vacation Guide. So we have done that for the last few years, it's a great app, and if you guys see it, it's got a picture, picture of Fisher's Peak on it, it, it'll go year-round with the Colorado Tourism. Um, Andrew Wallace threw a grant through, uh, Craft One-O-One when he was here, um, he actually put together a budget that was worked with at the Colorado Tourism Office under that grant program that said, so much should be spent for road signs, so much should be spent for print media. And we have followed that guideline this year to get us through, to know where our monies would be best spent. Um, Santa Fe Trail Celebration is one of the things we're very excited about. So we've worked with Marty, bless her heart, we really have, um, worked with her so much, she's been really so great, uh, through the process of the transformation process of the, um, tourism board taking over the Welcome Center and being accountable for that. Um, she has Jeff working for her full-time now, but we're really excited about the two-hundred-year celebration, so she has currently contacted Santa Fe Trail Association, the Chamber, the History Museum, and the Main Street Board. And we're trying to get the whole community together, because eighteen-twenty-one was the Santa Fe Trail Celebration, and for the two-hundred-year celebration, it'll be all over the state of Colorado that we are having a huge celebration for the Santa Fe Trail Festival in two thousand twenty-one. Road signs, we find, we funded all the road signs from Texas, New Mexico, Colorado, and Trinidad, and recently, we redid the wrap on Walmart to Trinidad, and come back from Walmart, hate to say that, and you go into Trinidad, right-hand read that sign, we just re-wrapped that. We also just entertained with the visitor profile study with Buxton through part of a grant through the Colorado Tourism Office, um, that is underway. And what I'm really excited about this is what Buxton is doing, it's a new way of thing, so you have your phone on you. So for the last year, anybody that has walked downtown and said, I wonder if there's a dress shop, oh, I wonder if there's a brewery, oh, I wonder if there's a place to bowl, I wonder if there's a theater, everybody that has done that in our, in our area in analytics, the study's gonna show us. So we can use it not only to, for tourism and what we're gonna do, the other part that we can use for that's really exciting is we can use it as an economic development tool. So for reason, some reason, we find out a million people are looking for socks, we could actually use that to go to a sock palace and say, hey, this is an, this is what people are looking for in our area. So we're really excited, that study's supposed to be done by the end of December. We all went to the Colorado Tourism, um, convention, um, it was a great experience, the mayor was there too, we all got to talk with Kathy Ritter about the state of the Welcome Centers, and it was a, really, it was a three-day event in Denver this year. Mountains and Mesas, we do that ad, Colorado Life Magazine, we've worked with a lot this year to do articles about Trinidad advertisements in that magazine. Taste of Trinidad, SoCo Tourism Summit, we had a huge deal in Trinidad, the Southern Colorado Summit was here in Trinidad some months ago, the mayor and I gave tours and, on the trolley, uh, to the people that were there, it was a, it was an outstanding event. Restaurants in town set up in the city, and we got tons of feedback, that it was one of the best Southern Colorado summits that had ever happened in the state.
We all said we had the best food out of every town.
Yeah, and it was just, it was, I mean, it was so the community, it was a farmer's market, we helped them with some ads and some dollars for the farmer's market, History Museum, we helped the History Museum for their summer music series. Um, we helped the Blues Fest, we, uh, we love the members of the Blues Fest, the tourism that comes into town, so we helped the Blues Fest. Branson Gravel Grinder, we funded this year, I'm really excited about the turnout, what Christine Louden and her partners have done. Um, banners, we're now working on banners, you know, there's been banners on and off all the way through town for different years, we've come with a lot of them. But currently, we're trying to do, we're trying to work on some that, like, one will have Fisher's Peak, one will have bowling, one will have fishing, one will have hiking, one will have biking, all the different things that you can do in Trinidad. Um, photo contests, we did a photo contest to put out the travelers, the Trinidad, um, the Trinidad guide that everybody might see. We have a new photo contest coming up, because we're gonna have a new guide coming out, so that's really exciting. So anybody here that's done any pictures of any events, we really say, please, jump in on that photo contest, there's a, a, a little namesake, uh, that you'll get awards for, a little money involved, and it, it'll be really great. Um, State Highway of Legends, we partnered with State Highway of Legends, which is called Show Locally, with the whole, um, with the whole Highway of Legends thing, so they put out a new, um, they put out a new magazine, they had some money from the CTO office, so they asked us and, uh, Levita and Orfano to all jump together so that we could produce that, and we did. Accounting, we're really, we're really, we really tried to hope, our accounting, we, we talk about it all the time, we had a lovely meeting with Cheryl, and we got down to it so that we all understand it, we're, we're very proficient on it. Hopefully, you know, we'll just, um, continue with that with the, um, taxes that are due, we've talked to you guys about the taxes for the, our Airbnbs and the VRBOs and for the hotel that's not brought into the city yet, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to do something about that. We also really are in, really wanna do some stuff with the shuttle. Um, it seems like the trolley only can do the tours, and so in the summertime, we have so many groups come in and they want it, but then, you know, we have to call Marty, and Marty has to rearrange how that's gonna work, and then people that have expectations on taking that trolley tour, the trolley's down that day, because we're taking some other tours. So we have integrating right now and getting a shuttle that only holds maybe fifteen people, so for those private tours. And/or, um, we worked with, um, with, well, Tom and Joey rode the trolley and tried to get time, so on Friday and Saturday nights, in August and September, part of September, we went to all the hotels, and we brought them downtown on Friday and Saturday nights. We would like to see a little bit more of that transportation happen, and a little bit more of, uh, being able to schedule those without needing the whole trolley, when you have a group of ten that wants to take the tour, and they're dignitaries in some way, because, you know, we, 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 we all know, we have a lot of dignitaries coming to our area to see it. Um, oh, and, and again, the devising on the trolley routes, um, like, we're even talking about at Christmas time, since the hotels are full so much to bring people down, but at the same time, we have the Christmas tour for the Christmas lights, so that's one time we couldn't really do that, because on Fridays and Saturdays is when people like to see the lights around the city, but then we wouldn't be able to go to the hotels, so. Um, and, and I know the polo shirts are a little deal, but we started with polo shirts for all the volunteers in the city, and, um, for the trolley drivers, but what we'd really like to do next summer is have as many restaurants downtown, and we'll fund the shirts for, wear the shirts that have the trolley times on the back, so if you could imagine that, and maybe a pizza place or a restaurant downtown, wearing a, a shirt that has the trolley times on it. We thought that would really, uh, you know, increase the, the numbers to the trolley, but the trolley numbers are incredibly up this year, I don't have those, Marty's gonna give you a report soon, and she'll have those numbers for you. Uh, we did start a contract with Chronicle News on Facebook, so they're gonna start posting on Facebook, this just happened quite a few times every day. Uh, partnerships, you know, we're building our partnerships everywhere we go, we got the Main Street, we've got, we're, we're trying to work with everybody in the city right now. We're also trying to work on becoming better with revenue, so as of this year, we've had a few ideas on how we can attain money, not just spend money. So there's things like, we had thought about buying a guitar for the Blues Fest, but then the firemen got on that right away, and then we had, um, we had, we just really would like to find a way that when there's an event, we buy an item, and maybe that item is, uh, raffle off somehow, or like a silent auction item, to just get some more money. Uh, we would like to do some things, like if we, if we attain some money for any of the music festivals, to give that money to the school system, to buy, um, instruments for the kids that wanna be in band, just try to make that. We're also working really hard on starting the, um, or, um, the tourism board for a youth tourism board, and so we have a handful of people that are working on that, but soon you'll see a youth tourism board. Part of that will have a kid from every school in town be on that board, so that will be a way for those, those kids not only to be, start to learn to be leaders themselves, it will also be so that, um, those schools will know about what's going on in tourism and in our town. Um, complaints, we've had a lot of complaints, um, but the, probably the three main complaints that we get from a tourism board is exit fourteen, and that's when you come off and you don't know where you turn, and there's builders, and there's the JR's that's closed, and then you have a couple of gas stations that aren't closed. Uh, the second one is Main Street, and so, and we thought about that, actually doing signage and selling signage maybe on those streets. We have some beautiful, it's like a whole different other aspect, but we will bring you that signage when, when we feel like we're ready for that. Um, uh, the third one that we always get complaints about, we wanted to let you guys know, is we constantly get complaints, it sounds so ridiculous for the tourism board, but the stop sign by McDonald's, that there isn't one on the crossway where the, where the tracks go. So if you pull into McDonald's and you pull out, and there's somebody, you know, that, there's no stop sign there, and there's the whole bioduct, just for you to pay attention to that and look at that, but that's a big thing for tourists, so really, sometimes they bother that. So think about it, if you're coming from like, um, coming out of the college and turning that you're gonna go towards, um, McDonald's. So when you do that, the bioduct is over you, and there's the train tracks, and I cannot tell you how many times people say, we almost got killed there, why don't they put a stop sign there? So, you know, just as, we're a home rule, we might wanna, we want, because there's been enough people that have complained to the tourism board about that. Rodney Woods approached the board about funding for the automobiles, and we really loved the idea, so we are the entity that funded the full automobiles and for the show to come up, and we get, uh, we get some national TV press with that, and the mayor did the commercial for that, so you'll see that come up this winter when automobiles comes open. We're working with RPM, which also works with the CTO, on a contract for implementing the preferred bike routes in town, so we don't know exactly how all that's gonna happen, except for they're gonna tell us where the streets are that are safe, street routes that we can do, um, street routes that we shouldn't do, what we should paint, what we shouldn't paint, where our cans should sit, what's gonna happen with Fisher's Peak. They're here to do the whole study on the bikes for the city of Trinidad. We're really interested in bringing a brewery to Trinidad, because we're really looking at economic development with tourism, and wherever brewery is set, it seems to be popping up, as other things seem to pop up, because people go through breweries, so we've been talking with Wally, and Wally and I have a meeting, and we're, we're trying to get a brew, a brewery-like event here. Well, we will give breweries all the buildings that are open in town that are able to, and, and what we will do, so we'll keep you updated on that, but Trinidad Triggers, we also help with them for Trinidad, Trinidad, Trinidad Triggers. Um, Southwest Chief Comedy Festival, so in our board, we put together twenty thousand dollars to start new events, and as many of you may know, we started funding for the Art of Pain, we started funding for money in events that are on in Trinidad originally. So we funded ten thousand of that out of twenty thousand dollars, we still have ten thousand dollars in budget to try to do another U of A in Trinidad. Ambassador training, we're pretty, we're pretty pushy about that, because we really wanted our Welcome Center to know what was going on, Marty did a fabulous job of doing ambassador training at the Welcome Center, we really have a great Welcome Center right now. Um, we also had to deal with the saga of where the money is gonna come from the, um, Welcome Center, so we can't, it, it costs right now about a hundred and ten, and the city kicked in, I think about fifty last year, and we're gonna need something on the place to help this, because we're living on a budget, where we're doing really good, but we don't have an extra sixty, seventy thousand dollars to help fund the Welcome Center for next year. And all the while that that was going on, I was on the Colorado team, of the leadership team for the state of Colorado, so I got to go up to the Welcome, to the Colorado Tourism Office once a month and do some stuff that really taught me a lot, and I really appreciate, um, being representative of the city of Trinidad, I do. Are we good?
Good.
Okay.
The way you speak is hard to be up there.
Wait, just a minute, hold on.
Hold on, you, well done, thank you. Uh, you speak faster than I can almost listen.
Well, I just didn't like it all the time, you know.
No, no, but if somewhere in your discussion, you spoke to your involvement with Monument Lake, I missed it, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so numerous times in many of our ads, we also advertise Monument Lake.
Okay, well, thank you, and then, uh, as you were speaking to the bus and, uh, the trolley, and using it for transportation for smaller groups, and said, COG has a couple of buses, which, you might be able to-
Well, I have worked, no, I've worked with Walt, Walt a little bit, but he has problems with like at night and other rules and regulations for the way his, um, transportation is-
Okay, but you know about that as a-
Yeah, we sat with him a couple times.
And, uh, not long ago, in terms of signage at the intersections that were confusing, did we not fund, or was there not a project for wave finding signs? I remember it was a cool, huge matter of design and all this, and it's not, we had-
The problem was the poles to-
Right. Some of those signs are still sitting in the, really-
So the point is, we have signs, they just need to reflect the mountains?
I think that's right.
Well, it's a bigger project than, than my memory.
There were bigger signs than what they were supposed to be on.
We can't use it.
I'm sure I forgot numerous things, because I'm standing here thinking about five more, but one of the other things I'm thinking about is something that we were, at the time, was just working with, with Mike about, and that is, there are some signs, big poles, that could be put on Main Street. We're, so we're looking into that, so maybe we would have like welcome to Trinidad for, uh, for, you know, during the, um, during the Christmas season or something, you know.
One of the other signs, it's, uh, sits in front of Toyota, I don't know if you've seen that, and there's a congratulate, uh, Mike and Yolanda Romano. We think one of those would be-
Only about twelve foot tall.
Right, one of those would be good at any, either one of the intersections, uh, fourteen and, uh, thirteen, and it can actually give you some, some light, some light on, some-
Yeah, directions for them. So I, I don't have that picture, but because you brought that up, let me give you a vision of that. So you are, you are on Commercial Street and you come in, you, you take that exit fourteen southbound, you come into Trinidad, and you have to make that decision vector, if you're gonna turn here, or you're gonna turn here. If you take the second turn, you turn by builders, and that- If you take the second turn, you turn by builders and that road is cut off a short, uh, with, with cement blocks after a little while, so that's a problem. But we thought about making something tasteful and I had talked to JR a little bit about his corner, cause he's got that sign that says JR kind of defunct on the corner there. But if we could make a beautiful sign there that was twelve to fifteen feet high, that was rock similar to the one that Tom is referring to. We could sell, we could sell as the tourism board, maybe, uh, a hundred, you know, a hundred dollars a line and that would more than pay for it in a year. We, I kinda scripted it out, um, if you wanna go to, um, LA Grill, do you wanna advertise for a hundred dollars? If you wanna go to the antique stores, if you wanna go to right there. And if we got ten businesses that wanted to go in on that, it would be a beautiful, um, display.
And there could be points of interest.
Where we could go downtown, just point to downtown where they wanna go, but if they're on that corner, you have no idea where to go.
And it's dark.
Not even get some dollars.
And it's a horrible display for our city, because if you look at it from somebody that hasn't been in our city, it's dark. So you get off that thing and it's dark. And, uh.
Anyway, it would be points of interest.
The point, yeah, we could do points of interest and just show people which way to go, things of interest.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything else?
All right, thank you.
No, thanks guys.
Item four, petitions or communications are all written. We have any others signed up? Okay, two of the people around here, actually, are on our, uh, agenda, so.
Sorry.
I'll just wait on, on that, but we do have one, uh, Mr. Joey Ora.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to make you, you can't refuse. I also work at the Welcome Center and I didn't realize, uh, what an asset that place is. The people come in and they get more information, there are people just, it, it, it's a great, uh, they're doing, Marty's doing a great job over there. Anyway. I know you have Mike as the, uh, uh, active city manager. I'd like to offer my services, since I know a lot about the community and whatever. And if you decide to hire me and do it for minimum wage, I need no health insurance. I do, uh, I work like a dog at whatever job I have. And I think, not that Mike's not doing this kind of job, but he's got lots of other things to do and I'd like to take a little pressure off him. Whatever you decide, I'll bow and work. Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll go on to item four A, Renee Martinez, US Census Bureau, for twenty twenty year.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me this time. I'm here to talk, talk about the twenty twenty census that's coming, it's around the corner. Tonight I've heard a lot about grant proposals, grant money and economic development. And I'm here to tell you that the census is a way to get that done. Um, so as you know or may not know, that Article One, Section Two of the US Constitution says that we will do an enumeration of people every ten years. So twenty twenty marks that tenth year. Um, which you may not know or may not have realized, that, that census data helps determine apportionment, redistricting in twenty twenty one. But what most people perk up is, when I say six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars in funding annually. So if you don't participate in twenty twenty, um, that's funding lost for ten years. So everybody in this room represents a dollar amount and we don't want anybody to be missed. Because you want not only the money to come to your town, but you want your demographics to accurately reflect the population in the community. Now again, this is a head count, it is not a citizenship, uh, count, so everybody counts and everybody should participate. So the census tells you that, that not only is it the law to participate, it's your civic responsibility, it's on par with voting. Um, and, and you've already talked about the importance of elections last night, so again, I encourage you to participate in twenty twenty. So again, it's a lot, it's safe, it's easy and it's fast. Um, confidentiality is something that everybody's very concerned about. Um, Julie, my, my colleague and I have both taken a lifetime oath to never share sensitive data. Title thirteen of the US Code protects information. And also if you've ever gone, um, to do your family tree, gone online and found census data, you, um, what you probably didn't realize is that, um, personal identifiable, identifiable information is not released for seventy-two years. So the stuff that we provide next year will not be available to, to anyone for seventy-two years. Now you've probably seen grandpa's name and age and all of his children on, on, online. But again, we won't find any of our information by name and age for seventy-two years. However, all of our information goes in adverb form or statistical data, so again, you will not be identified, um, by name and age. So George Washington University takes, um, census data every year and breaks it down. And we were told that in twenty sixteen, Colorado received thirteen billion dollars. What is funded or what, what federal spending programs are impacted by census data? Well, things like your school breakfast and lunch programs, special education head start, Title One grants. Also higher education, so Pell Grants and student loans are all based on census data. All of your service programs like Medicaid, SNAP, Sex and Eight Housing, WIC, substance abuse grant, block grants, and victim assistance grants are all based on census data. But also, um, highway planning and construction, federal transit formula grants. Um, when business and industry is looking for communities to relocate or to, to locate, they're looking at census data first. We know that in twenty ten, kids under the age of five are under counted, so we're making a concerted effort this round to make sure those kids are counted. Anyone born on April first or beyond should be counted in the twenty twenty census. Also, you should know that there's a separate campaign for folks that we call group quarters, living, people in prisons, nursing homes, college campuses, will be counted starting in February and they will not fill out an individual survey, but collectively they will be counted. So you benefit by those out of state kids that come to college here, because they're counted here, because they use all of the resources in your community. Also, the census will be available in thirteen languages. This, the paper survey will be available in English and Spanish, but because this year is an online survey, and I keep saying this year, but it's rather next year, twenty twenty. Um, you can request up to thirteen languages. Also, people that are hearing impaired or visually impaired, there are means for those folks to participate. And, um, should a family member have those difficulties of filling out the survey, you are welcome and encouraged to help them complete that. Uh, folks that have a physical address will be invited to respond via letter. You'll receive a letter starting late February, early March with an identification number, a website and phone. Uh, again, this is a free, respond by those methods. Um, if you delay in your response, you'll get follow-up postcards and finally, you will get the survey mailed to you. If you never respond to any of those means, you will get a knock on your door. If you wanna invite, avoid that knock, we encourage you to respond early. If you have a P O box, none of those things I outlined will happen, except for the knock on the door if you don't complete the survey. Rather, folks with a P O box will have the survey left at their door. Even for folks who say they never saw the survey, they can go online, they can call it in. And we encourage you to share that information with your friends, neighbors and family members. Uh, it's a nine question, um, survey, the citizenship question is not on there. You will have the opportunity to respond as early as March twelfth. The last date to respond is July thirty-first, again, in twenty twenty. But if you're not, if you're delaying, you're still gonna get a knock on the door sometime in May, so you want to not wait till July thirty-first.
Can you repeat those dates, March twelfth to July when?
Thirty-first. And I know I'm just providing you with the condensed version tonight, I'd be happy to come back to, uh, your work session to give you more details about the census. I do wanna close by mentioning that the South Central Council of Governments is going to form what we call a complete camp committee. We've been working towards that since the summer, we have a date of November twenty-fifth for training. And we hope that, um, council members, um, commissioners and all secretaries of the, of the two counties will come together for that training. Because you're the trusted voices of the community, you're the ones that will encourage those folks to come and complete the survey. Um, maybe in a community center or at the library or at home. Um, but you know your community best and you know how to reach those folks that may be a little bit resistant and afraid to participate. And that's why we need everybody at the table to participate. Finally, uh, we have lots of jobs available, we encourage folks to go online, census.gov/jobs or twentytwentycensus.gov/jobs. In this community, um, the pay is fourteen dollars an hour, because of travel will be involved, it's fifty-eight cents a mile. Um, it is a short-term temporary job, but we think it's good paying. And we want members of the community to be the ones out knocking on doors and they know the community best, they know their friends and neighbors much better than somebody from out of town. With that, I will entertain any questions.
Any questions, okay?
That is well done, it's consistent. But simply stated, if people are gonna ask to volunteer to register to talk some speak for lack of, like, for lack of a better way to describe it. Go online, do whatever's necessary, if not, the people that you're proposing hiring are gonna look before and ask them to contribute.
Well, if they, they've not responded, if folks have not responded.
That's my point.
Yeah, um, we'll know who those folks are and then those will get the knock.
And, and I suppose from my, I, I take it as my responsibility to encourage other people, reach out and do this.
Yes.
Because your actions in some doing are in the best interest of everyone that lives in this community.
Absolutely.
So it's important that you do that when you get that opportunity, however you choose.
And the way that it seems helpful and help is perhaps sharing, um, information on your website, on your social media pages, sharing our logo, letting folks know it's coming, how they can respond, perhaps you consider making a proclamation, uh, census day officially is, uh, people first. But, um, you could, you could do that proclamation as early as when the survey goes live, which again is slated for March twelfth. Any way that you can help us, we appreciate, thank you very much.
Question?
No, I haven't.
Thank you very much.
Just one quick question for those people that, you know, get it and they have questions concerning that, is Cog gonna have a local team that they could call? And for assistance if they have need be.
They can, and that's what, what the training does, is to provide them with those talking points. But also there are eight hundred numbers available for folks to call with any questions that they may have.
I, I could think of a major concern, and I get the whole issue again, people are very protective.
Right.
And, and we have to encourage, gain their confidence that this is a legit gathering of information.
Yes.
And, and it, it's not going to be used against any, which they may think you. You know, you get a media, you get several phone calls a week.
Well, and not only that, and so if you, well, you know, to be safe, you can take the number and call back.
You can initiate it.
Yes, right, right. But also we encourage people that if you get a knock on the door, to make sure you ask for that identification.
Right.
We all carry badges, um, so, so don't hesitate to ask for that, because yes, not only identity theft, but lots of scams happen all the time, for sure.
Are you going to do any kind of like, uh, campaign, the newspapers, to get people to know that this is starting up at a particular date? Is that something that you guys do?
Yes, uh, starting in the first of the year, the national campaign will be launched, so there will be newspaper, television, radio ads. Um, but then we'd also like to localize those messages.
The reason why I bring that up, just to kind of dispel, like you were saying, those people that are skeptical, if people knock on the door, bring in here.
We could even identify ourselves as a, a central calling point. If you have any concerns, call City Hall and we, we can encourage our staff to be the answers on the board.
Plus, if we get locals to be the enumerators, then people will recognize them as well, so that's, that's always a benefit. Um, I had somebody in my neighborhood who was an address canvasser, just confirming addresses, he was from Denver. So, um, we need people to apply, for sure.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Rest you?
I'm good.
Great, thank you very much.
On to item four, four B, Inbank, the Center, the Center for Community Innovation in Trinidad Creative District, creative starts bootcamp awards presentation.
Something fun for you all tonight, uh, it's Jeff Peterson, I'm Executive Director for the Center for Community Innovation in Raton, also a board member of the Creative District. And we have some award presentations from a bootcamp, uh, we had earlier this year. And, uh, so I wanted to go through that with you this evening. Um, just a few words first, um, as this council's very well aware, um, the entrepreneurism and small business is just vital to the economic growth of our community. The diversity it brings, the jobs it brings, keeps money local, all those great things that come with small business. Um, and an essential part of having that small business community grow is the support of nonprofits, the support of government to help them grow. Um, and this bootcamp was one of those efforts. Um, I'm, uh, currently from the center, I'm working with, with your new economic development person, Wally, on helping foster this, this ecosystem, we call it, this ecosystem of support and how small businesses grow. And, uh, so as part of this effort, um, I'm excited tonight to present, um, uh, to sort of celebrate the spirit of entrepreneurship and introduce a couple of our local entrepreneurs. Um, I don't know if you know them already, but this is Mahesam Thurman of So Tasty, and Jackie Brockmeyer of Herbal Persuasions. We'll let them give a brief introduction of, of what they're doing in our, in our community, of building their businesses. Jackie, you wanna go ahead and?
Um, sure.
Yeah, sure.
Um, hi, I'm Jackie Brockmeyer, I own Herbal Persuasions and I make a variety of sabs to help everyday elements. And so I'm hoping to be able to grow that here and expand it. Um, so this has been really fantastic to win these awards that'll actually help a lot of tens. I'm hoping to even possibly expand in CBD and things that I know is, um, growing in the area as well, so. I'm helping some people with that and I'm excited for what will happen.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here, for the purposes of media, what's your contact information? So, so remember, this is, this is a freebie, take your time.
Um, you can contact me at herbalpersuasions@gmail.com is the best way for that, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey y'all.
Hi. Welcome.
Some of y'all know me, and I'm Mo Dargan from So Tasty. And, uh, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today and, uh, the funds that were made available to our business. Uh, we've had four great years in Trinidad, we're, uh, we've just moved into the Elm Street train station at the beginning of the summer and we've been doing some tinkering and repairs and, um, sharing the lot with the guys next door. We'll hopefully get to feed them some lunch soon as they, uh, continue their project. And, um, we're, uh, excited to be opening our doors, uh, hopefully at the beginning of the year. And thank you for the continued support.
Well, that's probably just in time, because, uh, I believe that the space crate project that most people.
They'll be complete by the summer, yeah.
Summer, so.
Yeah, yeah, they, they have, they're giving us a grace period, actually, with their, by sharing that space. So, you know, they're helping us out with, uh, just, you know, so that we can stay under the radar and do what we need to do and get those done.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, Jackie and Mahesam were two of, uh, eight entrepreneurs that were part of this bootcamp. So this bootcamp ran last May for four pretty, pretty grueling weeks. Um, and this was the bootcamp that was sponsored half by the city of Raton and half by the city of Trinidad, in that partnership. Um, and, um, without, you know, that, that financial support, of course, that project would have never, would never happened. So very, thank you for the, for council for that. Um, the other fun thing about this project is I was able to, to twist some arms and, and drum up some financial support for the prize money for winners. We've already announced some prize money for some Raton winners and we had a ceremony, uh, at the recent Raton City Commission. Um, and tonight we're going to present the, the checks for, uh, our winners in, on the Trinidad side. And I wanna start with, uh, good friend and community supporter, Mr. Joey DeGarmo from Inbank. Inbank was very generous in this, uh, in this, uh, process and presented awards in Raton as well and, and tonight. Um, Joey has a presentation for, um, Jackie Brockmeyer for five hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to help her towards her business. her towards her business.
On behalf of Inbank, thank you, Jackie, so we appreciate your participation.
Thank you, it's very exciting, so.
So we just had to get a little overtime and take a little bit extra, so.
Well, if you want to send me more, you know.
Joey, I agree, you have a problem on the app account, so I just want to say thank you for what you do for the community, things like this. Well, thank you very much.
You know, it's fun because entrepreneurship supports, all of us as bankers, so we just have to keep it going.
Okay, thank you.
Let's keep it going. Thank you.
Yeah, their participation was great because it got those entrepreneurs that experienced sitting across the table from a banker and have them ask those good, good financial questions. The next two checks are from the Center for Community Innovation, which I'll represent, and also the Creative District, which I'm on the board and will represent. So the center sponsored a, a video pitch competition. So each of the entrepreneurs, we, we filmed a short video of their, of their pitch for their business and we posted it on Facebook and advertised it there. We had over eight thousand votes for businesses during the three or four weeks that that, that contest ran. And our winner of that video competition, Ms. Mo Thurman. Thank you very much. They did a great job. I learned through that process that she was a former theater major, so of course she just fell there. Yeah, did a great job. And then the other award, the, the Creative District, which of course is, you know, deep into economic development, space to create, creative, creative economy, decided to put up five hundred dollars for prize money for Trinidad participants. And we split the award between Mo for three hundred dollars and Jackie for two hundred dollars. So thank you very much for you two for your work and the Creative District thanks you as well.
Thank you.
Checks there, there you go. So thank you, both of you.
It was a great opportunity. Thank you.
Good luck.
As I'm sure most of you are aware, there have been a lot of changes have taken place already with Trinidadia. Rusty right now's just passing around the book that we keep with all our, all the advertising from last year, if you guys want to take a look at it. As you know probably, Rusty resigned as chairman of the board, so I'm acting chairman. Paul is the secretary. Tom Pest is our community liaison and Lucky back there is one of our directors as well. Just the fact that Rusty resigned, of course, puts a huge strain on the fest and I was actually about ready to cancel it. And on top of that, Grand Reynolds sold all of their tents, so we no longer have a source for a lot of the tents that we used. The two big VIP tents that we rented went up in price almost two thousand dollars. And, you know, I'm almost seventy years old myself, so we saw a huge need to reduce the workload at the very least. And as I said, we were about ready, I was about ready to cancel it and we came up with a little different idea. And right now, what we're going to do is have extra events, one in June, one at the end of June, it'll be June twenty-seventh, one in July, July twenty-fifth, and then a regular date in August, it'll be the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth in twenty-twenty. But all the events will be held in the entertainment district. We'll make, take a huge burden off of everybody that's involved with the Blues Fest, plus we'll be able to reduce our capital expenditures by about fifty thousand dollars a year. And overall, I think it's going to work out better for Trinidad. We'll bring more events, have different music in June, we're going to try to do Americana type music. And July is going to be Latin, Hispanic, something along those lines, and then the regular Blues Fest in, in August.
Well, the regular Blues Fest in the entertainment district?
It will.
Or just the Friday night?
Both, Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
Right. That's, like I said, that just reduces our workload by about eighty percent. The packet I handed out, first page is something that the city requested as far as our attendance for last year's fest. And the second page is the most recent profit and loss form. Page after that shows this table right here, it was produced from the figures that I received from Audra. And they're pretty much the same figures that you guys got last year when they were in front of council, only at that time you thought they were tax revenue figures. They actually are deposits, according to Cheryl at Audra, they can't actually separate out which pay period each deposit comes from. So this, as I told Mike, just actually produces fairly diluted results, but nevertheless, if you look on your TV here, you can see two thousand twelve highlighted, then two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Two thousand sixteen is the first year that the fest came back. Two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen. You can see there's a significant bump at the Blues Fest date.
What do you mean by deposits? So, you might have a clarification, I mean, or, go ahead, Joe.
So the information that I presented was the sales tax we collected from, for the activities from Department of Revenue. It's raw, it's straight from Department of Revenue's website, or data port, and, and it's broken out by month. That's how I know what to post, what we've received for each month. So the deposits that you're talking about, it said September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, that's what we collected in revenues from the state.
Okay, so...
And that figure is, you know, almost nine hundred thousand dollars this year.
So the correlation with Blues Fest would be what, the fact that it occurred in September or August?
It occurred in August.
Yeah, so January wouldn't be that relevant.
No, it's flat. And actually, if you look at all these peaks, you can tell the one in January is most likely Christmas, New Year's.
Right.
Then you got one at four twenty, and then you have the one in August.
The bump is the material thing.
Right, so, and, and like I told Mike, you know, these statistics are somewhat diluted because we don't know for certain that that tax was for that tax period or whatever, so it's spread out a little bit. But it definitely shows an influence of the Blues Fest. So then after that, you have just some letters of support for the fest. And then at the end, there's two proposals here. On the first one, if we charge for tickets for the Saturday event in August, because it's downtown, because we won't have our big giant VIP tents like we usually do, I estimate we can collect about forty thousand dollars in ticket revenue. With that, money from tourism, money from our regular sponsorships, and thirty thousand from the city of Trinidad like they did last year, then I think that would be enough to, to fund the event. If the city, on the second page, if the city's willing to do twenty thousand per event, which will be June, July, and August, and give us sixty thousand dollars, you can make the whole thing for free. There would be no tickets whatsoever. Now, I have talked a couple of times with Mike and I had one meeting with Mike and Audra, and there's a couple of other options that Mike come up, but Mike said it'd probably be better if we talked about it in a work session sometime. But anyway, like I said, we love to use the entertainment district. I think it's a big boon for every business down there when we pass the pre-fest. If we have four days of music down there, I think it will certainly help the economy a great deal.
If you think about the entertainment district, a lot of those local businesses will be, see, will be selling the food and, and they will, they will be gaining.
Well, and some of the expense that we save is that it's going to cost us less for insurance because we no longer will be serving alcohol, we won't have to deal with food vendors. Just the fact that we're not buying or renting the big tents and the stuff from Grand Reynolds, twenty thousand dollars off of our pay right there. And of course, you know, every little bit adds up.
Wait, did I interrupt you? You said CSU will not be selling alcohol, as you were at such a part.
Exactly. When we use the entertainment district, we're not allowed to sell alcohol, only the, the participating.
How is that going to affect the success of the project, do you think? The actions of alcohol?
Well, I heard no complaints from anyone in that respect during the pre-fest issue. And one of the reasons we want to move it as well is a lot of the comments that I heard this year afterwards was how much everybody liked it downtown at night.
Cool.
And, you know, a lot of info we've had as well. We have people, our customers that come at noon on Saturday, they're usually gone by five o'clock. So now what we're going to do is on the, on the two Saturday events in June, July, and Friday night in August, will be from four to, from six to ten, for four hours, just like the pre-fest. Saturday will be from four to ten.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Well, like I said, that's something that, you know, when it comes around, we'll have this discussion in a work session, so.
Absolutely. Like I said, there are some other things that I talked about with Audra and Mike that maybe that would be better, that before a work session.
Okay, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
On to item five, consent agenda approval. Five A, approval of regular meeting minutes about October the fifteenth, twenty nineteen. We have taken B and moved it over. On to item C, approval of follow-out interstate gas amendment to the National Gas Service Agreement Rate, Schedule TF dash four. Item D, new hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by Trinidad Smokehouse LLC at two twenty-five West Main Street, setting a public hearing at six PM on December the seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Alternative neighborhood boundary as the corporate city limits. Mr. Teddy Wilson, is he here?
Yes.
Okay.
Harry.
I have Brian Main here, but we have one ref, okay, go ahead. Item E, approval of the bills to the tune of three million, nine hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Item F, approval of the payroll from November the second, twenty nineteen to November fifteenth, twenty nineteen, for the amount of three hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred ten dollars and eighty cents. Could I have motion please?
So moved.
Second, okay. Call vote please.
Yes.
Gedal?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mitake?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes. Yes. On to item six, public hearing, six A, consideration of ordinance authorizing the master services contract dated October the eighth, twenty nineteen, between the Trinidad Police Department and Leslok Incorporated to provide for body cameras, data storage, and professional services. Hearing is now open. Some information on this is it was a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, four hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars over five years. First year was from Resolution fifteen thirty-three, which was taking thirty thousand dollars from the marijuana funds. It'll require a two to five year of the second to fifth year yearly payments of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Chief Correoso, do you have anything to add?
No, just after testing the three cameras we did, this was the best camera and it's valuable for us to have those cameras.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything to add to that? Just, I'd like to add that the agreement actually has the taper language in it that states that, I'll just read it. Clients has funds available, they need until the end of the current appropriation period, which is that first thirty thousand. And that client intends to request funds to make payments in each appropriation period from now until the end of the agreement. And that mean, that doesn't mean, you know, if the budget isn't there, then it's not there. We just, we will have it in the budget, which that will be a request. Okay. Council, have any questions? Which we take?
Given the value of video in the total context of everything that happened these days, particularly in... And she said we'll be able to, and it'll be high quality.
Ms. Grago?
I agree. Anybody that thinks they're not being filmed, they're thinking something's crazy because everything's filmed.
Well, yeah. Every, every, every significant news event has somebody that video.
Yeah.
And, and oftentimes, it works well in defensive municipalities and city of Trinidad.
No, I just wanted to make sure that this is also going to have the correct audio capability so that way playback will be seamless and smooth, so that way for legal, you know, necessities is...
Yeah.
Clarity is, is on point.
Yeah, they're, they're very good cameras. Of the three we tested, that was the best.
Well, it certainly came in handy that one time where it proved a good shoot. And this is a much, this has got to be much higher quality because that was what three years ago?
Yeah, well, yeah, we had upgrades, but this is, this is significant, better, better camera. In, in fact, even today, I had to bring over a small clip to Mike. It was not significant, but it did help me show, you know, the officers weren't at fault.
Was that from sample or the new cam?
Uh, no, it was just the old camera, but, but still, you know, it's, it's helpful, even in small things, sometimes showing it's better than telling.
Did you?
No, I'm up for this, I'm a good deal.
Well, we continue to try to upgrade your equipment department, which, like, like Dave was saying, necessity, and Ms. Grago was saying, you're on video every time you do something.
Yeah.
It's a good protection piece for our officers.
It keeps us honest too.
By the way, there's a great piece on Frontline, which is the PBS, and it's all about artificial intelligence, but also how that integrates with video surveillance and how important that is in society right now.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone in the audience to speak for or against the ordinance? Not to disclose. Item six A one, second reading of ordinance authorizing the master services contract dated October the eighth, twenty nineteen, between the Trinidad Police Department and Leslok Incorporated to provide for body cameras, data storage, and professional services, and it was for that amount, total amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars, for five years. Could I have motion please?
You do. I move that we accept this bid.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Call vote?
Donato?
Yes.
Gedal?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mitake?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes. Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, seven A, consideration, consideration of a work to business improvement, improvement district for twenty twenty operating plan and budget as amended. Do you have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike, do you have anything? Mayor, members of council, as you recall, there were some questions with the initial submission. They, we, we let them know of those concerns. They've kind of adjusted some of the... some of the, the language. We also ran it via Malcolm Murray, our attorney, who was instrumental in this and.
I think I agree with the issue. And I thought that you did a good job on that.
Yeah, you did.
I was.
Yep. So, uh, I think it's good to go. Call vote please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
On to item eight, miscellaneous business, resolution authorizing expenditure marijuana revenue received by the City of Trinidad for the third quarter of twenty nineteen for three hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. Let me pull something up here real quick. Okay. Just for, for information, uh, the city project sixty-five percent share, ADO demolitions for a third quarter, twenty-five thousand dollars. The Quinn Fire Truck Dent Service, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. There was a real location of the coworking space of thirty thousand dollars credit there. Space to create oversight board for thirty thousand. Fire Department cancer policy of two, for two thousand two hundred dollars. Hermit cam for eleven thousand six hundred dollars. Police Department ATV, sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. Department, Police Department SWAT gear invest, forty-seven thousand dollars. Police Department K nine officer, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Safety Department site docs tablets for ten thousand. Third floor conference room furniture, two thousand seven hundred dollars. Public Works Garage backup generation for thirty thousand. Northern Commission's third quarter for forty thousand. So that was a thirty, three hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. And we have no outside funding requests. So that is the total amount.
And this is pursuant to our work session?
Yes, this is from our work session. So could have a motion please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. Tate?
Not for me, sir.
Grago?
No, sir.
Lopez?
No, sir.
Miles?
Nope.
Okay. Call vote please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grago.
Yes. Item eight B, resolution adopting and entering into the trust agreement with Colorado firefighter heart and cancer benefit trust and taking other actions in connection here with. Have a motion please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr.? Uh, I do not have anything more than what was presented at the work session. This is a policy for, on firefighters and I, I think it's valuable.
Mr. Tate, pursuant to the discussion of the work session, I mean, I take, I proceed.
Tate?
I checked the, I read through the policy. You know, you know, I mean, you know, I would, but, and, and I just want to make sure the firemen know what this policy covers because there's ten different levels. I mean, do you, have you read the policy?
Yeah, everybody's read the policy and I actually have the signature sheet from everybody that wants to join us. This is every member of the fire department.
I, I'm not going to tell you guys what to do, you know, if that's what you.
Again, the benefit is we do not have to prove that we got the cancer. It's automatic. If you get one of these five cancers, it's covered under this trust.
Did you read those different?
Oh, yeah.
Did you guys?
Yeah, and then the guys that, you know, smoke or chew, they lose twenty-five percent. They all know that. I mean, we've done many.
Did you guys do a background check on this trust that does this?
Yeah, and it's the same one that's been doing our cardiac trust for years. So, I mean, they just combined them both together.
Because I tried to do some research on them and they're pretty recent as far as, I think some of them date back just to two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
That's right.
So it's a fairly new trust.
It is.
I just want to make sure you all know what you're.
We do.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, good.
The question I had here is, you know, says that council needs to nominate the trustee. And of course, you've identified Chief Howard as that person. So I was wondering, Mike, do we, should we take that on separately, being that council needs to nominate and okay that person?
Do we need to identify a person or could we say the chief of the, the then existing chief of the fire department with no particular party name?
Right, right.
So it's, it's included in all of the information that we receive. So if you're okay with that, then.
Whomever occupies that chair is the man or woman.
I would recommend that. And if it changes, if they need a specific name, then I'll bring it back to council, okay? Uh, the other thing I read is on page twenty-two, seven point four, the table compliance, financial obligation to continue upon appropriation budgeting available of specific funds. And that's a case that we have some kind of austerity here, you know, within ourselves. Uh, you know, do we terminate the program or can we float it for a year in case, you know, we have to come back next year?
Forty-four hundred dollars?
Yeah, it was not much, but I just thought I'd bring it up as a, as a talking point. That being said, call vote please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grago.
Yes.
Mr. Grago, I want to say something for, you know, I know Mr. Backrack's been sitting back there a long time and, and I, I wanted to say this before he left. I, I could do it under the council report, but I'm just kind of scared that you wouldn't believe me and not have any attention put to it. But if I could go on one second.
Sure.
Uh, I just want to say that about four weeks ago, Mr. Backrack and another fireman were up on Oak Street checking fire hydrants. That was by my daughter's house. My little, my little grandson that has autism ran out of the house to see the big fire truck and the firemen. He looked at him, he mounted the fence and he kept looking at Mr. Backrack there and wondering what was going on. So Mr. Backrack there just took the time, he asked my daughter, he says, can he come out here by the fire hydrant? And he did. He had my grandson go out there with autism. He was showing it. And he worked with the, with the fire hydrant and they put the fire hat on him. They put him sitting in the fire truck. And it's good to see, a lot of people have a lot of criticism for everything. But when credit's due, and not because it's my grandson, but they, he took the time and Miguel, what was his other name?
Ortiz. Miguel Ortiz.
Miguel Ortiz. Took the time out to do this for my grandson. And if they do it for one, I know they're doing it for all. So I just want to say, Dave, thank you for being a responder. People have always helped people. And what you did, God will bless you for it. God will bless you. And I thank you, Miguel, very much. Thank you, Mr.. I had a picture of him with an house, my house. But thank you.
On to item eight C, first reading of ordinance, vanity landmark designation in Carnegie Library located within the city of Trinidad at two oh two North Avenue Street, being block four, block one twenty-eighth of the original town site, considering due date for consideration of said ordinance to November the nineteenth, twenty nineteen at six PM. Could I have someone introduce?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Could I have motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike, do you have anything? Anybody have any discussion? Actually, uh, so we established a historic preservation commission through the certified local government and George is taking that on. So I'll, I'll let her give up the written description.
You've been sitting quietly there.
I pace it.
All need me, all.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Their request before you is an application by the city to grant local landmark status to the Carnegie Library. And this is a pilot program which provides protection to historic structures and additional grant opportunities once property is landmarked. The application was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission and forwarded to council for final determination. And so I ask that you schedule a public hearing to review the application. And that's all I have.
Okay. Well, I think it's a good idea. It's all building it down. I think that's a good idea.
Especially since there's so many other Carnegie libraries that are being shut down across the country. Yes.
Any questions for, for, for Tate?
No, sir.
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, call vote please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grago.
Yes.
On to, uh, eight D, uh, we moved that over from the consent agenda, which was eight, a five B approval with resolution for the city council, the city of Trinidad prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement within its jurisdiction against any individuals engaged in non-violent civil rights demonstration. Motion to approve on that?
What?
We'll bring it up and then we'll have a discussion. So a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. You brought up the question.
Yeah, I did. And I wanted to, to have a bit of a discussion. At first blush, read that. Approval of a resolution of city council, the city of Trinidad prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement. When I first read that, I said, what is this? The implication is they're going to do otherwise? It's, it's, to be asked to do this, I think, given my background, was a little bit insulting. Of the many employees the city has, the police department are some of the few that require peace officer standards and training certification. They require extensive training to, to do what they do. And, and I, and I realize it goes on to qualify this within its jurisdiction against any individuals engaged in non-violent civil rights demonstration. Many times, non-violent civil rights demonstrations turn violent. And I think it's, to specifically limit the response of law enforcement is totally inappropriate because these people, these officers are trained when to use force against resistance. And, and we trust that. Who else works with a gun and has the authority authorization to utilize deadly force if and when necessary? And do we need an administrative limitation telling us or those officers when they can and can't use appropriate and necessary force? And I, I understand that the information provided, offered was not provided to us sooner by previous administration, but it is now. And I recognize that it's a component to a grant. And I'm certainly not going to be able to point to the point of losing that grant. But at the same time, I thought to have an administrative encumbrance attached to a grant without the inclusion of a discussion with the police department or certainly what else, just to say, you will do this or you don't get the money. Again, it's insulting to think that police officers are going to do otherwise. And I know that there are some who do watch the videos that you see on TV. But I have confidence in our department that that's not going to happen. And if it does, we have remedies within our own structure without having to have this. But I'm, I, at the risk of belaboring a point, I'm willing to proceed. It's just I wanted to, and worse yet, to have it submitted in a consent agenda without any voice of explanation, opposition or resistance, and I'm not resisting, without having some opportunity to publicly disclose, disclose this request. I think it's inappropriate, but necessary, and I will support it. But at the same time, I think it flies in the face of everything that we entrust our police officers to do. We put them out there by themselves in the middle of the night, give them a camera, a gun and a taser and tell them, go and make us all be safe tonight while we sleep. And now we want to say, we don't trust you enough that when our non-violent demonstrations, which quickly can escalate, we're going to tell you, you cannot resist, you cannot match for us. And, and they're not going to be abusive. The way it works, generally speaking, is one up, officer presence, five there. And as, as things escalate, police are authorized to escalate one level above. And, and I just wanted to make that point. Thank you for your indulgence. Ms. Grago?
I have nothing.
Lopez?
No, I, I kind of agree with you. I mean, it's kind of, I mean, it's part of our Civil Rights Act, you know, that you're not going to go and do this. I understand the component, but I see where you're coming from and, yeah, I'm not going to.
Maybe I got my dander ruffled because of what I did.
Well, of course. I mean, it's, it hurts your feels, you know, because you've heard the thought.
I'm glad you raised the issue. I think you're right. We're kind of hamstrung here.
We have a choice.
But thank you for raising the issue.
Okay. I should totally agree with you. Totally agree.
Chief, do you have any, uh, concerns or questions about it?
So as Anthony did address, our policy does cover what they're asking us to do here anyway. So it, it is kind of, I guess, they're just wanting us to be sure that that's what's going to happen. But we, we have those in place already. So maybe ten years ago, this hurt my feelings a little more, but I guess in the society we live in now, they want to put these constraints on us. So.
Yeah, I saw one just over the weekend and it happened inside of a police department. It was kind of crazy, but it was a demonstration there.
Well, you know, and we've, we've, we've actually had these kinds of things with like when safety was on strike and stuff like that. We, we got stuff from the state council what we could and couldn't do. So it'll be just a check and balance, but I understand.
Okay. I just thought it'd add any question, whatever. Thank you.
Good day.
Turn it over to discussion. Call vote please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grago.
Yes.
Item eight, council reports. Mr. Matei?
I'm done.
I got nothing.
No, I, I just, I have a couple. If you notice that you got all an invitation to the, uh, Carnegie.
Yeah.
Public Library, the, the open house, please try to make it because it's the thirteenth from five thirty to seven. And because of all the discussions we had about, about the library, it would be good if we go over there and see what's going on. Oh, ourselves.
I got something going on that evening, so.
Oh, no, we don't accept excuses.
Council actually is slated for a work session that evening.
That's what you got going?
Right. Oh, we have a work session? I thought we'd do it on Mondays.
Monday is Veterans Day. On Tuesday, the council chambers is used by the, uh, planning commission. Thursday, uh, urban renewals in here. So Wednesday is the day.
Is the table, is the table going to have that dinner and that stuff for the veterans?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's certain.
Is everybody going to have that?
What time will we session go, gosh, previous?
What time are we going to have that, work session?
Uh, five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Scheduled unless council.
I have a conflict too with the previous engagement as well.
I can do something maybe a little, just a pair earlier.
So what's, I mean, I'll be back to you tomorrow on that.
Okay.
Well, we'll probably discuss, I have another board meeting at six thirty that evening. So to go through several things from five to six thirty might be kind of challenging.
What do we, what do we have on that?
So what we have is short-term rentals. Uh, we have the land use code that is possible in, may or may not be on there. We have court fees, court of records.
Land use code is huge.
It's huge, yeah. That's a discussion.
I think we ought to make that one just to stand alone at some point.
To do that. Um, and then internally, we're discussing, and I'll just bring it up here. Uh, we may have a discussion on the admin service and, um, what, just an open discussion and invite all concerned. Um, if the thirteenth doesn't work, we can, we can, we can juggle these things. There's, you know, it's just things back up.
Would council be able to maybe just a little earlier instead of five o'clock, maybe three o'clock or three thirty?
This is a bad time of year for me. It's just.
No, that would be good.
And we're, we've got to know when we, our computers are up. It's all hands on deck.
About?
Four o'clock would work, but.
Four o'clock would work?
Yeah. The check is just a little bit too early.
We'll take a little bit of straw polls tomorrow or something with everybody.
Yeah. Thirteenth, Wednesday.
Thirteen, I wait for the day.
Then we can go late to the, yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get, go forward at five thirty and then five thirty, or whatever, six.
I just think, I think it's important because we have a lot of discussions about life. And also just.
Find out and give us a call.
We'll do, we will.
Just real quickly, the mayor and I went to the first meeting of potential tenants and Andrew Michelson last night on space to create yard space. And I've got some brochures here if you want to look at it. There's a little. And I've got some brochures here if you want to look at it, there's a little, um, postcard, are you going to mention this in your little?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, and, um, it shows the, the, the artist concept of, but it was really interesting to me, and I don't know if you caught it last night. Besides the mayor and I and maybe five people.
Who's the one?
All the rest of them, everybody else was from out of state and the majority of them were, all of them were from out of Trinidad, a lot of tech, several. Yeah, but I, I thought, well, and it was, they, they are excited, it was, people are.
I did kind of a head count a couple of times, I came close to fifty people.
That's what I thought, I just guesstimated, so.
Good problem.
I, I'd say eighty to eighty-five percent of them are prospective tenants. But I will mention one thing like what came up in the meeting last night, um, it was just a casual discussion. But we're, they're concerned about parking. Not necessarily the new building, the main street property. If there's seventeen new occupants, I, I don't know if we're going to have.
I know that was addressed in the earlier statement.
Yeah, when it ended, they are, there is a parking area.
There is, but there's a, a green space and they made, they made it very clear that that green space will remain a green space.
I think the green space was on the.
It is.
I'll follow up with that.
That was a concern and it was brought up by one of the neighbors. So if anybody wants any of this information. I know. That's all I have.
Uh, yes, I was at my first ARPA board meeting with Mike last week and one of the things that I kind of took away from, I mean, I was, I'm trying to absorb a lot right now. I'm listening and just trying to ask questions, but they were, they're having, uh, in their general manager report, a legislature kind of changed to create a new authority, remember that part? So, and, and, you know, stepping aside my speaking here, but, um, it might be geared towards renewables in terms of production of energy. I asked who the sponsors of this bill were, um, they were going to get back to me, it's in the interim committee right now. Right now, there is also energy legislation review interim study committee, which is a gentleman by the name of Jason Gillander, do you remember if that's, did I have that one correctly? So, uh, just to give you kind of a heads up, that's kind of what might be coming down the line and as we learn more, I'll present that in the future as it's presented to me and to Mr. Valentine. Um, but that, that was, I didn't kind of, uh, just, not doing too much right now.
Are, are you staying on the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
But, uh, that, that's what I have for my portion of my report.
Um, I had board meeting for Chappa up in Denver end of, uh, last month and I guess it's starting to stick, I'm actually asking questions now. And you know I can ask questions.
Ask questions.
No, it's a great board and I'm, I'm really enjoying my, uh, my time.
So I'm working with Park and.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Did you get the information and text it to you? You had requested the contact.
Oh, yes, I did, I did get that. Thank you for that.
So I'm working with Park and right board to try and get them to change their meeting, because it falls on inevitably on our work session night. So that's why I've had a lack of reporting from there and trying to keep together with Tim, so. That's mainly it, is trying to get on the same page where we can get me at their meetings again. Because I usually, they're going on about the same time we're going on. I don't know, I just won't agree.
Okay.
I got one more thing, I'm sorry, is it possible to get any information for the urban renewal, I'm sorry, the, um, urban forestry board members, they were hoping to have a little meeting, and those are only two of them, but they want to continue to know what their role is.
Okay.
Even though there's only two.
Yeah, I, I, I asked around and.
I saw the email, I'm sure any results have come your way.
Anthony, uh, so I'll follow up.
Okay.
So now, thank you.
Yeah, he triggered a thought, uh, you said urban renewal. Year, last year and the year before, there was miscommunication in the, uh, taxi, uh, process for her to fund urban renewal and they're catching up and cut, the point being is it is generating a lot of questions at the assessors office and the trade office. What is urban renewal, what do they do? And I went on the internet and I saw Port Collins has one, a little, little shared capital thing, what it does, how it's fun. If we can generate just a little single sheet frequently asked questions kind of thing, what Trinidad's urban renewal is and what the goal and objectives are.
I'm sure Malcolm Murray can do that.
Yeah, so that we can, so we can have something at the handout and say, this is what urban renewal is all about, because everything I say gets worse than it was, I know you have a hard time believing that. But if we can have the accurate succinct truth, that would be best.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one I want to mention, I, uh, I think I missed the last couple of tourism board meetings and the reason being is it seems like I've had a lot of conflicting issues going on that seem to be important. Uh, but I should be able to attend next Wednesdays as far as I can tell. Um, I attended a dinner, uh, they invited me to, uh, it was Evergreen, um, a couple of weeks ago and there was a dinner that they had at the Mitchell Museum and not really sure what the meeting was about, or what the dinner was about, but, uh, just a meet and greet, pretty much now is it, because they had a lot of their board members there from, met a couple of people from New York that they had down here and. So it was just kind of an interesting dinner to go to.
What did they discuss?
They really didn't discuss anything.
Really?
That was the whole thing, it was just, it was good evening, social, and dinner, and that was about it. Uh, Andy Merr from Senator Gardner's here, office was here a couple of weeks ago too, um, they both talked, talked a lot about, I'm of course, good glad it was last, but I wanted to. On the eighteenth, uh, the capital development committee for Fisher's Peak was here, uh, Mike and I attended that and, uh, that went really great, as a matter of fact, they were here and they toured, uh, Fisher's Peak, uh, for a couple of hours. And that capital development that they'll do now is, uh, as a matter of fact, I got some information, did you get the information, Mike, too? That they will start having some joint meetings of, um, coming up, I guess, in December and January. And, uh, there's some funding that the governor is requesting for at the Fisher's Peak. Director Lou from the Collin Department of Transportation was supposed to be in here that day that we had our twelve inch snowfall, so she was not able to make it, so she's planning on making a, another day to come down, if I understand. We, according with, according with Mike, we had a call into the Trinidad Development Group on multi-modal project that we've been talking about for some time over there, so that's kind of just an ongoing discussion. Uh, we also met with commissioners and, uh, Mike, uh, the city, I mean, the county manager to set up the December the ninth legislative session. Uh, we pretty much, uh, got it all set, Victor's been working hard with all the people that will be speaking and we'll begin all that information out to everybody as to how and what, and, uh, it's going to be from ten to probably twelve, twelve thirty that day, so. Uh, it looks like we'll have pretty much all people we've had in the past, our state legislators, our national legislators, representatives, and, uh, we're going to have a main focus this year, it looks like, on probably the homeless issue and the opioids. That's going to be kind of a focus area that we're going to be talking, that's going to be presented this year, so, uh, it ought to be a pretty good discussion.
Mike? Thanks, Nick. Um, so we already talked about the work session, we'll, we'll get back with you on that.
Do you want to get started early, I can just come a little bit late.
That's not the end of the word. Okay.
Is it, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't. Also, you might not, I, I can't remember what time my thing is, I'll, I'll, I'll get mine.
Well, and also, I, we want to schedule around and, and I think we should all go to the library after, so.
Will we have to post something for us being there as well?
Uh, don't talk city business, right?
We're just going for.
Someone else is hosting it.
I can post it, I'll just post it.
We'll just post it, that way we're safe. Yeah. Um, we also need to schedule a public hearing, uh, on our C I P, congratulations on getting that through, we, we, we need us, as part of the whole resolution and, uh, of the ordinance, we have to have a public hearing on it. And we'll, we'll bring that forward probably at the next meeting. Um, and in your packet, we talked about the, the gas, uh, supply charge, there's a memo in your packet that, uh, in analyzing the gas supply charge, we're not raising it, we're not lowering it. We're, we've kind of reached a medium where we're not over collecting and we're kind of, we're kind of coming into the curve here, so we're going to leave it where it's at and, and keep monitoring it, so.
It says there would be no change at all.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else, is it?
That's all I have.
Yeah, if there's nothing else, call for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote?
Bernado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.